The Board of Appeals for the Town of Chelmsford will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 5th, 2019, at the town offices, 50 Gilricka Road, in 204. We request for special permits, variances, and other appeals. This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. And we have a letter here regarding 29 Gorham Street, Sean McDonough. He's asking for a new public hearing. But I have a letter from Douglas Hauser to the chairman and members of the zoning board of appeals, Town of Chelmsford. And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on behalf of the applicants, Sean and Lauren McDonough, we request that the public hearing schedule for this Thursday be continued to your next meeting. Please consider this letter as a formal request for the continuation. Thank you in advance for your attention to these matters. Douglas Hauser. So it's a new meeting. Do we continue it, or we just?
Yeah, you just don't take no testimony and vote to continue.
So I'll read it to open it as well.
Yes.
29 Gorham Street, Sean McDonough is seeking variances under 195-9 conformity to construct two new, two-family homes, and raising and structuring of an existing two-family home, and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. I could have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue that public hearing till our next meeting, which is January? No, maybe January. Oh, January.
That's the second Thursday.
The second.
Is it January 2nd?
I think it's going to be the following week. I was going to discuss that with you tonight.
Okay, January.
Till the January meeting.
Till the January meeting, 2020. Without prejudice.
I second the motion.
Second my gentry, all in favor?
Aye.
Second hearing is a continued public hearing. 23 Seventh Lane, Quality Green Homes, for a special permit. But we have an advertisement for a variance that Carlina is going to feed. That'll matter.
This one is 23 Seventh Lane, Quality Green Homes, a second variance under 195-9 conformity for reduced lot area. The applicant requests relief from lot area to create two buildable lots, and any other relief that's deemed necessary.
Thank you. Good evening.
Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, Douglas DeShane, representing Quality Green Homes LLC. With me this evening, Jeff Brem, manager of Quality Green Homes. You will recall from previous meetings that my client owns the property at 23 Seventh Lane. And we had originally submitted a special permit application to allow for the reconstruction of three existing dwellings on the property. Those dwellings being built prior to the institution of zoning in Chelmsford, and therefore would be allowed to be reconstructed under Section 195-8E of your zoning bylaw. While the reconstruction of these types of dwellings is allowed by right under your bylaw, there's a limitation as to how much they can be increased under that by right allowance, and it's 20%. As long as you're only increasing by 20%, there's not necessary to obtain any kind of permits other than a building permit from the building inspector. However, as you'll recall, Mr. Brem had proposed to actually increase the size of the three dwellings, each by over 20%, and therefore the need for the special permit that we had applied for. We held an initial hearing on that special permit request, and then even a follow-up hearing on that request. Quite frankly, as you all know, some of our neighbors, including the Bakers who are here tonight, had some concerns and opposed those permits for a number of reasons. They had concerns about the density of having three new larger homes on that parcel. They were concerned with the use of Seventh Lane. I mean, Seventh Lane, you know, it's not a town road. It's really hard to figure out what it is. There's easements, there's use, it's a right-of-way. But it is of odd character in terms of roads. Yet, you know, the postal service and the town recognizes it for, you know, postal addresses and tax purposes. But, you know, Seventh Lane is not our conventional kind of town road. So the Bakers had concerns about the fact that we would now have three new homes, you know, utilizing Seventh Lane, which I believe the Bakers and predecessors built that driveway, or, you know, spent the money to develop the driveway. So, you know, there were concerns about this whole Seventh Lane access, which was part of their concerns. I know they had some concerns about the fact that in redeveloping these three homes, they would ultimately be a condominium ownership, because they were on one lot. So what you would have to do is condominiumize them, and people would actually own a condominium. And that was not attractive to them in that, you know, the neighborhood is all, you know, single families, fee simple lots, and they had concerns about the condominium ownership. So they had a number of concerns. And lastly, they also raised the question of whether there was abandonment of the properties, which would then impact our ability to reconstruct them. So as you recall, there was, you know, quite a debate and a discussion about concerns and issues. And in fact, in response to that, you will recall that we had provided the board significant amount of information on utilities, showing, you know, water bills and sewer and electricity, trying to establish that in fact there were no two-year gaps, at least in utilities. And that was part of our evidence in addressing the abandonment question. And then you'll also recall that we had what I can only describe as a very colorful cast of individuals come in and testify to the board as to their continued and uninterrupted use of the property. Again, this all being evidence for the board to consider on the abandonment issue. But most importantly, while that was going on, we also reached out and established communications with our neighbors, with the Bakers, to see if we could sit down and understand their concerns, while also explaining to them what my client's goals were, and, you know, what his legal rights were, and things like that. In other words, we wanted to see if we could sit down and discuss this issue, and see if we could come to a situation where not only would my client be able to achieve his necessary goals, but the neighbors, including the Bakers, could be comfortable in what we were doing. Those discussions, I'm happy to say, were very productive, and we were able to reach what we believe is a very reasonable and acceptable agreement. And that agreement essentially entailed developing only two homes, instead of three. And that obviously addressed at least one of their concerns, the density. We went from three to two, so that was a good... And my client was also comfortable with that reduction in the project. We agreed with the Bakers that we would seek a variance to create two separate lots on this property, so that each of these homes would actually sit on an individual lot, fee simple ownership, and therefore could be sold and controlled as, you know, single-family homes on their own lots, again, consistent with the neighborhood around us. So that addressed that one. We have also agreed to provide to the Bakers an exclusive easement over the portion of Seventh Lane that runs on my client's property. And we've agreed that we would not utilize Seventh Lane for access to these two new homes, but rather, we would create a common driveway off of Parkerville Road, so that these two homes would address directly off of Parkerville Road, would not utilize Seventh Lane in any way, and ultimately would give the Bakers exclusive use of Seventh Lane. So that appears to have addressed the concern over Seventh Lane, and, you know, this added traffic that would be added by developing these homes. So in essence, that is what we have agreed to with the Bakers. And again, it ultimately resulted in a reduction in density, addressing the Seventh Lane issue, addressing the condominium ownership issue, and also the fee simple lot issue. You'll recall that the neighbors and the other butters said that they were supportive of reasonable development, but didn't feel that our three-lot special permit was reasonable. I believe we've now gotten to a point where we're in agreement, and I'll let the Bakers or their attorney speak for them, but that we are in agreement that this would constitute not only a reasonable use of the property, but a use that is ultimately consistent with the neighborhood, and helps to eliminate some of the issues, you know, applicable to the neighborhood now, especially the Seventh Lane issue. So with that, I filed a continuance of the special permit request, and added a variance request to allow for the two lots to be created, so that we could do the two houses. So with the board's approval, I'd like to address the variance request. Clearly, a unique situation. You know, we've got a single lot, three homes on it, that, you know, legally could be reconstructed, rebuilt, and occupied. My client, this is a very interesting variance request, because we're not seeking a variance request that will allow us to get more density out of our land. I'm sure you're used to the situation where people come in for a variance to say, "Well, can you give us a variance for a reduced lot, so we can get two lots out of one, and we can get another home?" Or, you know, two other homes, or whatever. Usually, people are seeking a variance in order to allow them to get more density. Ironically, if this variance is granted, it will result in less density on the property. Clearly, I think, a very unique situation. So the variance, again, is not to allow for more dwellings, but essentially less. As we all know, the standards for variance are that we have to establish, among other things, that there is hardships owing to the soil shape and topography of the lot, that there are financial hardships associated with the project if it isn't granted, and that it's a situation that is unique to our property and not consistent in, you know, something that's regularly seen around the area or in the neighborhood, and that's something that would not be, you know, significantly detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think we do have an argument that we can meet those standards. The shape of our lot, as you all know, is a long, narrow, rectangular lot. It has a limited amount of frontage along Parkerville Road, but the entire, would that be eastern side of the lot, abuts Seventh Lane, which, again, we're really not sure, I'm not sure what Seventh Lane constitutes other than potential easements and whatnot. It's not a roadway, you know, it's not an approved roadway. And it abuts the lake, so we do have issues of wetlands, or at least the resource areas, and setbacks, and things like that. So there are hardships with respect to the reconstruction of the lots. But I think the most unique factor to consider here, and I don't mean to be repetitious, but it's the fact that we're not seeking a variance that will allow us to increase density. We all know that the bylaws that require a certain size lot and certain amount of frontage for a lot, which is what we're seeking variance from, is intended to ensure that the density and the separation and the privacy of dwellings is acceptable and satisfactory. And the town has determined that lots of a specific size will help to achieve that. You know, as long as everyone has to have a certain amount of land to build, we can be assured that we won't be over-dense, we can be assured that we won't be impinging on each other, and in other words, we get density that we want. Again, this situation is very unique in that this variance will actually help us to be closer to the density that the town would like to see, rather than farther away, which is the typical situation when someone seeks a variance for an undersized lot. We're going to agree that if we get the variance, you're only going to get two homes, where we currently have a legal right to produce three homes on that property, much higher density. So I have to admit, this is the first time I've ever sought a variance from a dimensional requirement in order to allow me to build less. But usually, you're trying to get that variance so that we can add density. So by granting the variance, I think you are not derogating from the purpose and intent of that bylaw that says you have to have 40,000 square feet, you have to have a certain amount of frontage. The purpose of that bylaw was to provide reasonable density and separation between homes, and in this case, granting the variance will actually assure that, because we won't be putting three houses on that lot, we'll be putting two on essentially two new lots. So I do think that this is a very unique situation, and one that the board could see would be beneficial to the town in terms of maintaining its required density and separation of homes. And so, and again, this is very important to the neighbors, that these homes not be in a condominium ownership situation, but rather in a fee simple ownership. They feel that the possibility that these homes will be better cared for and taken care of will be higher if they're fee simple, rather than a condominium situation where some of the maintenance and things like that now falls on an association, rather than individual responsibility. At the end of the day, whether they're built, you know, on the two separate lots, or they're built on one, while there's a difference in ownership, the density's the same. You know, it's still a reduction from what they could do. So we would certainly ask the board's consideration in granting this variance, so that, in essence, my client can achieve, you know, what he had hoped to do so, or at least enough of it that it works for him, while at the same time, you know, making sure that we're good neighbors, and that the neighbors are happy with what they ultimately have next door. So I'm hoping this is a win-win. We have to answer any questions you have on the variance request.
Any questions for the board?
Everything's all written on right here, Ryan.
Do we have a stamped set? Do we have a stamp set?
Do we submit one? If not, I could stamp the plan, sign the plan right now. I'm the engineer, so.
He's the engineer.
Not that difficult.
I'm very comfortable with that.
And I apologize, I didn't, I should have sort of explained what I was saying. Recall, Seventh Lane is here, and there's a paved section, the pavement of Seventh Lane sits along this area of here, and then a section of it sits on property of?
Lot two.
Of Mr. Brem. Lot one and two. What we've agreed is this blue area, which represents the pavement, and a little more area that's on our lot, we've agreed to provide the Bakers an exclusive use easement of that area, so that this Seventh Lane would essentially become their exclusive?
Their driveway.
Driveway. They would be responsible for maintaining it, taking care of it. Our homes would not utilize it or access it. You know, it will also allow us to get rid of this crazy Y situation that's out there today. There's actually a branch that comes across off of Parkerville here, and then there's another branch here, so that's kind of an odd... We would eliminate that, allowing, you know, therefore, there would just be one access that would become their exclusive driveway. We would access over this common drive, which would be a direct shot into the first house, and then a driveway down here. I would expect that in the event of an emergency, or if the fire police had to access these homes, I'm sure the Bakers would be acceptive of allowing the, you know, the fire department. So we got great access to these two, not only through their own driveway, but in our neighbor's driveway, so to speak, so.
Do we have letters, Carlina?
No.
The fire department didn't still weigh in on it?
It's a safe plan. Yeah, they weighed in at the beginning, doesn't matter.
Oh, is that comfortable with the turnaround? I'm good with it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jeff Brem, the applicant. You do have a letter in the file, just reminding you, from Middlesex 4-H, and they were in favor of this plan. I think mainly because the buildings would be further away from their property line.
So they don't have any comment about the driveway being right on their?
They did not comment on it.
They were happy, they were happy to see that the old structures that currently exist along here, and in fact, there's some of them actually encroaching, that they would all be removed. They're actually a good neighbor.
But they're not concerned about the driveway changing?
They have not reached out to us or...
They're against their rents there.
I'm sure the structures now are a magnet for the kids to come out and walk around there anyway, so they'll probably like that.
So we don't have any letters from the engineering or anything, Carlina?
No, it's just two lots. Nothing changes on the plans, except for whether it's one lot or two.
But wouldn't the driveway be something of concern for the fire department access and whatnot?
No, obviously not.
I think your actually, their concern was with the single driveway. I think with both, they were happy with the single driveway now. They have even better access.
They have a second.
That makes sense.
And the size of the two dwellings? Are they the same as what was originally? Is this one and two corresponding with the same?
No, originally, we had three, and they were smaller than these two. The two are larger than any one of the original three, but in terms of total square footage?
It was about the same.
It's about the same.
So what is the ratio? Are we looking for lot one and lot two? What's the ratio of dwelling, living space to lot size?
Good question. I think it was nine, I have it at the moment.
Yeah, it wouldn't be much more.
I can't, it's usually the...
Well, if you consider the fact that the three proposed dwellings would sit on the whole lot, and were of a particular square footage, Mr. Brem has said that these two homes are about the same size as the other three.
Right, but now we're...
But the lot's not changing.
Right, but I'm just, I'm interested in seeing, if we're creating two separate lots now.
Okay.
So we're in a new ballpark here, so I'm trying to see what is, based on why we have zoning, residential space or living space per lot space? It's why we have?
We see what the percentage of the land?
What's the percentage of coverage, just to?
And does it comply or?
Oh, it complies, I know that. Just a second, I'll give you a 20, 260.
My engineer's working on that.
You mean, we don't obviously have a house covering 50% of your land space?
Basically, the first house is 11%.
Of the lot space?
The deck gross floor area.
Okay.
And the second one?
Should be similar.
I'm half-blind, I can't see out of the others.
Even with my glasses, these numbers are pretty small.
That's an engineer.
The second one is 7.8. So Jeff, if you added the two houses together, what percentage would that be of the whole lot? It would essentially be the same percentage of the previous three houses on the same lot, so.
Right.
But you're right, by dividing them, now you've got a separate ratio for each lot, correct. So it'd be 11 and 7.8.
Asking for the variance, we need to kind of look at them as two separate lots.
I got you, thank you.
And I'm assuming whatever questions or issues were about the dock will be allocated to lot two, and the whole land? I know there was questions about the dock control and water access before, that's all been addressed?
But that's not before us.
Oh, okay.
It's just up to the people who?
Got it, okay.
Somebody's judging, but not us. Any further questions from the board?
So can I just clarify what the reliefs are that are needed on lot? So lot two, it's frontage and area?
I think in my cover letter, I gave you the exact variances. Each lot requires a frontage variance, and...
One requires a side yard.
And a side, lot one.
Requires an area, but it also requires a... We're asking for a side yard variance, because in order to shift this house over enough to make room for the driveway, you can see that what happened was we end up getting down to 25 feet. Right, Jeff? And that's the... We still have, oh, I'm sorry, I take that back. It's the other side. In order to leave this strip for the back lot and the driveway, we had to pull this property line down to here, so we can meet the side yard setback here, but we're a little tight here, because we had to give up this land to be part of that, so.
We're getting a variance of 15,000 square feet.
Do you want to reach in here? If they are something, or?
I'll take it on. Lot one will have a variance of 15,600 square feet, plus a frontage variance required of 66.52 running feet, and then a side yard variance requiring 13 feet of relief.
And then lot two is just the frontage area, yes?
Correct, and that's 130 feet of frontage.
What would be the total area of lot two?
Lot two is 40,000 square feet.
Two is 40,000 square feet.
It's 40,000, and that's the requirement, right? Exactly 40,000.
So lot two actually just conforms to that.
And I will point out, with regard to the side yard variance, I've explained why, you know, this lot line ends up being here where it is. But as you know, the side yard requirements are to ensure that we have proper separation from people's homes and property, and the fact that, you know, we have no homes here, it's the 4-H. And really, there is 32 feet from the edge of our house to the edge of this property line. It's just that, you know, so we're not like... The side yard variance isn't going to allow us to put our house too close to the neighbor next door.
Do we have any, well, Baker here?
If everyone here is done, I can open it up to the public. I think maybe Mr. Eliopoulos is going to speak for Mr. Baker, certainly would like to hear his opinion.
Absolutely, yes.
If you're speaking for him, that's just for...
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, members of the board, my name's Philip Eliopoulos. I'm an attorney here in Chelmsford with offices at 9 North Road, representing Maureen and Gary Baker. And we've been working diligently on this project, as the board knows. We did have some nice communications over the last couple of months with Mr. Brem and Attorney DeShane. We appreciate their efforts. The Bakers would support this proposal. A couple of things that the board might find of interest. One is, years ago, the Bakers' property, back in the 80s or 90s, was also one lot, pretty much exactly the same shape and size as this lot. These lots came, they were donated to the town back in the late 30s. Someone left the town this land in their will, and it was left as one big parcel. And over time, properties were built on it, and these driveways were called Seventh Lane and Sixth Lane. And I did research on it. These are not town roads, they're not right-of-ways, they're not even shown on the plan that created these lots. I think the town, over time, maybe for fire protection, for the sewer project, gave them names and put them on a sewer plan when the sewer went down there. So that's kind of the history there. When the Bakers' lot was created, in the 90s, they requested a variance from the town to do exactly what Mr. Brem is proposing. They created that one long lot into two small lots. It required a variance for lot size. The town granted it. So what they're proposing would be consistent with the direct abutters. And so, just a little bit of background there, it would be consistent with what's next door. I think you've got the two direct abutters, you've got the 4-H on one side, the... I think you've got the two direct abutters, you've got the 4H on one side, the Baker's on the other, in support of the project. It would certainly address their concerns with regards to going from three to two structures. I think we, we really encouraged the request for a variance, knowing that they could do a condominium by right with two houses. We just felt if they, if there are going to be two structures there, it would be better that each owner owned their own land. I think it does make for a little bit better success in terms of ownership, maintenance, less potential for a two-group condo to go, to get to a disagreement. Yeah, so tiebreaker there, there's a problem. So I think it makes sense, if, if, if it's not a variance, it's going to be a special permit condo, and we just think it makes sense to have ownership there. The Bakers are welcome to come up and express their support if they want, but I, you know, I do speak, you know, for them tonight, and we do hope the board will support this revised proposal. We think it'll help resolve a lot of issues and kind of take the, the issues off the table, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the board's patience in this matter. We, I think that in the very beginning, I made the point that I was not opposed to responsible development, and I feel as though that this is far more responsible than what was proposed in the beginning, and we find it acceptable as a, a abutment.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? Yes, sir, sit at the podium, please.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a photograph, may I present copies to you? This is from Google Maps. I think it'll just help you to see what I'm about to request. Thank you, folks. You'll see a couple of boxed areas, right in the middle. I'm sorry, my name's Robert Hague, I live on Fourth Lane. I'm the, near the blue dot, right in the center of your picture there. Yes. And you'll see a couple of boxed areas, the one on the far left is the Seventh Lane. You'll notice it's all wooded, and there is a second lane box as well. I think the board may at some time address that property. In the middle, where the blue dot is to the right, this board, a few years ago, was approached to put in development there between Second Lane and Fourth Lane. There is no Third Lane. And at the time, the developer was going to put in a cul-de-sac that would have four homes in that property. A number of us came before the board at that time, and we requested that that number be reduced, and you folks very generously weighed all the, the material and made it three homes, and for that, we thank you. At the time, the developer was going to clearcut all of that land in the center of the picture. This board, I believe it was, made a stipulation that only the trees that were required to be removed for the building of the property and the structure be removed, and that the remaining trees be left that way. I'm hoping the board might consider a similar proposal for this. It does sound like going from four or three properties to two, especially if Gary is in favor of it, I would be in favor of it. Just would like to leave as much of the forest as we could, and for that, I think.
Do you have a bit of a cutting plan?
No, but I concur with him. We, we would just clear the trees.
The area would kind of lend itself to not clearcutting.
Correct. We have sewer, so that saves from putting in a septic system. I will tell you some of the trees that, as the previous owner indicated, they've all been trimmed up over the years, so that's good, so the branches don't fall and so forth. Our intention is just to clear what we need to clear for a, a house and a yard and the driveways. We have no wishes of that.
You want to put that in some sort of...
Down the motion.
I think that would be worded, I guess.
Here's my question, I mean, when the owners eventually purchase the lot that prevents them from...
They can cut every single tree down. It's just, it's just if you, if you start with the trees in place, I think that you're going to have some fear in there. We can work on some language that may give them a, you know, a, I mean, there's a certain amount of room you need next to the home. Maybe a twenty-foot buffer around the structures would be acceptable, as well as the roadway, of course.
And if you mind, and a rear yard, because kids need to play and so forth. Doesn't need to be a big yard, but just a yard.
Yeah, and you're certainly going to be dealing with conservation on tree root. When you say the rear yard, I'm assuming it would be the water section?
No, I'm talking about the rear yard really here.
Oh, okay.
I was more looking at this yard here, this yard here, there really is no rear yard, there's a hill right there. And you're right, I'd have to do any work back there, I'd have to put a conservation...
Conservation responsibility.
Yeah, I think from our marketing point of view, the, this house here, unit two, will have the lake, or the pond, as, as the primary accoutrement, so to speak. And lot one will have some kind of a yard in the back so the kids can play, they can fence it off and so forth.
Anyone else that would like to speak this evening regarding this application? Seeing none, and I have more letters for a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
By Jackie, second, Erin's sister. Jamie, I don't know why I had to have her on there. Can I get a little closer? Like Jamie. All in favor, including Jamie? I'll write it down. You do look like someone I knew that was Jackie, but I don't think that's what I'm doing wrong.
Has been for so many years.
I think we can take this up. There, any thoughts on how to approach this? I'll say that if, if it's approved, I'm in favor of the variance as opposed to the common ownership. I think it's a lot cleaner, I think the idea of having the ability to decide what you're going to do in your yard is a lot easier when you own it, as opposed to having to discuss it with a neighbor who may or may not be the neighbor you want.
And the debate on the increase or decrease in density based on two or three dwellings, because those three pre-current dwellings were really seasonal, as opposed to now two full-year homes, I think might be a draw there, as far as whether or not it's the same density or decreasing in density going from three structures to two structures, because the reality is those three structures on there now weren't used full round. But in saying that, I commended the parties involved, that they were able to come to a mutual agreement, and I think two structures does, and single ownership does align better with what has been happening with the development of the area over the several decades since this has spread upon itself in Chelmsford, so. I personally want to say thank you for going to the table, reaching out, and working out a more conducive agreement with, with the abutters and, and the neighborhood.
That sounds like a motion from Jamie.
I'm just saying, people, everyone's agreeing now, it's a, it's a, it's a plus sign, I look for the positive.
Are there any other thoughts?
Don't forget the tree cutting with that.
Yes, and, and again, he's already, I think, I think, I mean, I...
I don't think quite on a word there, do you have any suggestions, Paul?
I, I think you could include a condition that the developer shall limit the tree cutting to the least amounts.
Extend practical.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, only, only those necessary for development.
You've already received a commitment that that's what the developer intends to do.
Correct, and I think it's, it's practical that he would, it's not...
Ultimately, you won't be able to walk down there and say, well, you removed that tree, and we don't think you needed to.
And the other reality, there may be trees there that are, are a hazard as well, because those are some old pines. I don't, I don't know that there is or isn't a tree that's in, you know, disrepair, so to speak.
I know your hearing is closed, but if I may, I, I don't mind a condition that says I present to you a plan with a building inspector, a plan prior to doing any cutting. In that way, I can look at the trees and look at the area and make a decision.
Okay, that sounds like a really good idea.
So I have a question.
In the newsroom.
Seems very opposed to the condo. While I'm inclined to not want to split the lot, what is the, nobody's down with the condo idea, no?
My concern is that, so at that point, so many things change. You, you own this driveway together. Lot, lot B says, ah, the driveway's a mess, I want to fix it. Lot A says, I'm not going to pay for half of that. Big problem, there's only two people, you don't even have a tiebreaker. And that's, I mean, that's one concern, if you want to take a tree down, now you have to have, yeah, anything, really. I mean, even painting might even be a, if, if you, depending on how the condo docs are written...
So I understand all that, yeah, you can't pay your house top pink because your, your neighbor in your condo store doesn't like it. I understand that concern from like an ownership perspective, but from like a town administrative perspective, is there any downside, I don't know who this is the question for, is there any downside to having a condo association versus residential properties, individual residential properties?
So I can tell you, I can tell you from our side, or the building department's side with enforcement, when you run into a small condominium development that with a very small association, we don't have the funds to make repairs readily available, as you would with a larger condominium association. So as it gets older down the road, and repairs need to be made to decks, things like that, the funds generally aren't there when you have that small open association. So that's on the enforcement side of the problem we have.
So not necessarily condo associations, but smaller ones are more of a problem, compared to the larger ones?
Small ones, that, that do not have that, that larger, uh, person, so to speak.
And two, or even number is almost a problem, too. Your deck is lining up.
You can't vote. Yeah.
You want to replace it, you have to get your condo association to agree to do that. It's external to the home, but the other guy doesn't want to pay for it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's just, it's, I'm sure the condos can be worded so that all the structures are separate, it just gets, it just gets complex, in my opinion.
So there is some benefit from having a condominium association rather than a homeowners' association when you're talking about maintenance of, of common facilities. In this instance, though, it looks like by separating the lots, you're really eliminating the need for having common facilities. So the owner of the back lot is going to be responsible for...
The back lot.
But, but also the, the access to the back lot, even though it goes along the other lot. So when you take that away, that gets rid of sort of the concern with regards to a homeowners' association. Because condo associations, they can actually put a lien on the other condo owners to make them actually pay their fair share of whatever the common costs are. Although, again, you get very difficult from a two-unit condo.
Yeah, because their fair share is more or less, so...
Who's going to pay themselves in terms of imposing that lien. But to the extent that you can actually eliminate the common ownership of these facilities, it does help.
If you, if you were in the front one and the back driveway field, would you be excited about writing that check?
Yeah.
It's, it's more simplicity than...
Yeah, you have to pay for half of everything, yeah, half of everything, instead of one fifty of everything in a large...
And looking at the negatives of, of having, you know, is, is just splitting the lot. If you, if you do or you don't, these plans are exactly the same.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, if something was going to change dramatically because of the condo ownership, I, I probably would look at it differently. But the, whether you go with a special permit and make it a condo or a variance...
Yeah, it's just, I understand, it's just really an ownership question.
Yeah.
So my, my, my question is too, is, is looking at the, you know, the layout of the neighborhood, you know, if we say between Seventh Lane and, and First, are there any other lots, or how many other lots, or what is the percentage that are, that are under or that are at point five acres, half an acre?
It was a locust, yeah, at one point.
Oh, see, there we go.
Are you ever... I'm sorry? Oh, yeah.
Can you mind, yeah, yeah. See?
And are there any other condo, are there any other associations in that area of the lake?
I'm sorry?
There aren't any other condo associations in that area?
I don't know.
Not that I know of.
No, no, no.
So I'm assuming these, like, Fourth Lane here, it's second, that looks like around, oh, that...
The gentleman in the back was in Fourth Lane, even, I think they're all single families.
Yes, they're all single families.
Yeah, so there, there looks like there's several plots in that immediate area that's, even a half.
There's some smaller, there's some bigger, there's definitely a lot of, they were all camps.
Right, at one point, but...
Probably most of them before zoning in nineteen thirty-eight, probably most of them were not.
I'm just looking at dividing the lot, one of the current, I know is staying with the consistency of the neighborhood, but if it looks like, well, we're not setting anything new, because we seem, there seems to already be several lots at a half, or...
Much smaller than a, than an acre, yeah.
Right, so I think that might stay. I think I would be, I would be more concerned if this would be the first, if we were trying to get, thank you, you know, a lot well under an acre and be the first one in the, in the area. It looks like that's a trend that's already been established, well established. And then the percentage of the square footage per lot size seems to be, I mean, is well within the limits, so we're not overbuilding the lot, right, so we're not...
I think this has, has less ratio than most of the other ones.
Right, because some of the other lots, I mean, some of those, one, a couple of those look like there's more living space than ground space. Not that I can have actual numbers, so I'm just estimating nearby picture.
Crowded.
They, right, so, but I think staying within, with this proposal, it looks...
None of the other lots have identified its size on this, on this plan, as far as, you know, acreage or square foot.
You can ask me and I'll tell you.
I think, I'm not sure what our, our techie over there is fighting with, yes?
No, I'm just, normally it would be up on the board. I mean, I can happily tell you some of the square footage of the lots.
Oh, like Mr. Baker's, I, I, it isn't on this that I can see anywhere.
It's okay, I mean, it's, it's quite obvious from here that they're, that they're the same size. There's a lot really smaller than what we're talking, giving, so...
So I think it's staying pretty consistent with something that's already been established and something that previous owners have done within the past several decades.
Do you want to put that into a motion?
I mean, if no one else has any other questions?
May I say?
I will say.
Okay. I will propose a motion, I'll make sure to get it late, to approve the variance request for Seventh Lane with previous letters posted, written, and the contingency of a cutting, tree-cutting plan provided to the building inspector as far as making sure the reduction or the minimal cutting is done for the building purposes to protect the forestry.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Anna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good unanimous? Good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
And just as an administrative matter, I'd, I'd ask that our special permit application
Good luck.
be allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice, whereas we have no need to go forward with the special permit. So could you, Colleen, I, I guess I, would you like it in writing? I'd like to request that we withdraw the special permit. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. I truly am a thingy, so that's, reaching out and...
That's great, I'm sure, it never is.
I have a second question.
Now all yours. But better over...
Just for the record, it always...
I have an application in, we'll have something at night, plus the Farm Street, and we have a meeting at night, we do a better...
I will tell you, I will not be able to, school breaks are still ongoing on, we have school break through the third.
Through the third?
Yes.
All right, so can we...
So then if we want to do the second Thursday...
Thursday in January?
Do the ninth.
Yes. I don't know about the others, but I'm, you know, going to get away with my kids, so.
I think I already have them in my house.
Yes, so, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. I'll have to use the day.
Mr. Chairman, I don't even know.
That's all I needed.
Do you need minutes approval?
If you guys actually have a chance to look over it, we'll do it.
I have a question on minutes, Paul.
Okay.
You got any corrections?
Where you say members present and members absent, you have Marcus absent, but then you have him listed as making motions and things.
Oh, well, that's a correction I need. Please, sometimes I need to be answered.
So I'm like, wait a minute, you can't have both of you.
All right, well, then we'll definitely, let me fix the, let me fix the minutes and I'll, I'll present them next.
Good night.
Thank you. Night, Paul, thank you.
Take care, Paul.
Can I still copy this?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't need any of it anymore.
No.
Are you happy?
Yeah, I want my wall.
Are you happy?
That's, that's the other thing.
I didn't see that coming. Anyway, we get, we're still in the meeting, so.
Paul, make sure that, uh, Jeff gives you a stamp.
Thank you.
And he mentioned here.
You're welcome.
Happy holidays.
Appreciate your effort, though. Thank you.
What was that, Ryan?
Make sure that we get a stamp plan.
Yes, yes. I'll make sure Jeff gives me some.
If we're not going to do minutes, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
You have a second motion to adjourn, just a second.
I still second.
That way you can shut the TV.